Well, thank everybody coming out tonight. And we've got, uh, we've got three things to add to our agenda. Under superintendent report, we'll label it M as Mark. It's approval of a sixth to ninth grade science textbooks. We get some new textbooks. So approval of six through nine science textbooks. All right, so the next one will mark as N. And it's line of credit for the 2022-23 school year. Next one's O. It's a resolution for Virginia Public School Authority. Resolution for Virginia Public School Authority. And that's O on a superintendent report. Got, don't have anything else? I need a motion for approval for the gen- agenda.
Make that motion.
Got a motion from Mr. Sally?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Hood. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, approval of minutes for the May 3rd and the May 23rd special call meeting. Got any questions, anything in the minutes? If not... Motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Mr. Housewright?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Sally. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, approval of claims. Anybody got any particular question of any of the amounts or any of our bills? Bills? Any certain item? Questions? No, I'll, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Got a second from Mr. McConnell. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, public comment. Does anybody wish to address the board at this time?
Mr. has on.
Yeah, okay.
My name is Alan Clark. Live just outside of Gate City towards Duffield. And, um, I guess from what's happened two weeks ago yesterday, I guess what the biggest thing is on my mind, what I'd like to ask the board is, are we doing as much for security for the schools as we possibly can? Um, I know there's some things that are being done that the public doesn't know about, and I understand that that's a good thing. I guess the, the part that bothers me the most is, um, I've got a grandchild, senior high in, uh, Gate City Senior High. In two years, I'll have a great-granddaughter, hopefully in Weber City Elementary. Um, my wife and I are concerned. I don't know, do we have enough resource officers? Do we have one per school? And I know that gets involved with the Sheriff's Department and all of that. I know, understand that. My problem is, uh, the times that I've been to, uh, Weber City to pick up a grandchild, there's no resource officer car outside. Now, there may have been a man inside, I don't know that, but to me, it's to show, if you see, if somebody's gonna do something bad, you see a car, a police car sitting there, you're gonna have second thoughts before you do it. Um, I know that the, uh, state finally got their budget approved. I saw where Scott County's gonna little, get a little bit more than you guys had to guess at a few weeks ago. I understand that. Is any of that going towards resource officers? And also, I call it the, the door lock program. That's where all the doors are locked, kids can get out, nobody can get in other than one door that's rung in by a buzzer, by somebody in the office. I just, my, my question, I guess, for the board is, and if you answer questions, this is the first board meeting I've been to, are we doing as much as we possibly can? I know it's easy to say yes, but that little county down in Texas that has 26,000 population in Scott County who has 21,000 population, so they're really, they're a lot like us. They're, they're a rural county, um, with a lot of farms. And, uh, if anybody was to say, "That can never happen in Scott County," you need to get your head out of the sand. Because we are a rural county, this, the kids, that's, that, the things that that boy down there saw, the violent videos, um, Facebook, Twitter, Snapchat, all that other stuff, our kids in Scott County have got the same access to that stuff as that boy did down in Texas. So for anybody to say, "It'll never happen in Scott County," you're, you're wrong. It can happen. And I just want the board to be aware that we're, we're concerned, the parents are concerned, the grandparents concerned. I'm gonna be, I am a great-grandparent now, and she'll be, like I say, in Weber City in a couple of years. But that's my question, do we have, do we have enough security? Are we really doing all we can do? And I appreciate all you people.
Mr. Chairman. You're welcome. Good. Mr. Clark? Did I get your name right, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
I'm Jason Smith. I'm assistant superintendent, and one of the things I do is oversee safety in our division. To answer your question, we have 10 SROs that are employed only for Scott County schools. Uh, we have applied, uh, Sheriff's Department applied, and as my understanding was approved, to add at least two more SROs into Scott County schools, which will put an SRO at every school, every day, except for the exception of one. We may have to split it between two schools that's there. Um, every access in Scott County is electronically closed. You should not be able to walk into a school at any point in time that you want to. We have the buzzing system on the main door. We've taken doorknobs off of several entry points within Scott County for a plethora reasons of safety, but to limit that access that we have. Now, to answer your question, are we doing everything that we can? I believe there's more that we can do. And we have plans this summer, um, to get our division safety team. We have a division-wide safety team, and we also have, each school has a safety level team also. And we're gonna start looking at some more avenues that we can do to make our schools even safer. And the biggest part of that really comes down to training. Making sure that our SROs are trained, and they have been great to attend trainings, and what we do to do if there's an active shooter situation. All of our SROs are trained in the point that, you know, Columbine was an issue of really a turning point when you had some school shootings. Unfortunately, the old protocol used to be, come, set up a parameter, go in, and wait till you, get that parameter set, and then neutralize the, the offender. Uh, that's not the protocol that we use in Scott County. If there is an active shooter within Scott County schools, our SROs are trained to go to the threat. And that's what we'll, we'll try and do. And you are right, there are some things that I can't tell you that we do.
I understand.
But we do have some underlying things too, that would help in a worst-case scenario that we have.
If there, if there are things you can't say, that's a good thing.
Yeah, there's, there's some things I can't release them of, but...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you for your concern, too. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Anybody else wish to address the board at this time? If not, we'll move along to, uh, presentation of the dance team. Ms. Kegley?
I have two. Okay. Thank you. And here is, uh... Hello. My name is Sierra Kegley. I'm a junior at Gate City High School. Today, I'm here to talk to you about starting a dance team at Gate City High School. I myself am a dancer, and I've been dancing my whole life. I would like for there to be a place for me at Gate City High School. Today, I have with me Eliza Sanders, Aaliyah Kegley, and Gracie Glevins. These are three amazing women that are willing to volunteer their time to help and choreograph on this dance team. The reason why I wanna start a dance team? I had this idea a few years ago, but I never had confidence to step out of my comfort zone and introduce the idea to the school. Since becoming Miss Gate City, this inspired me to reach for my dreams and goals. I wanna make an impact on our school and community. Scott County is lacking in our arts programs. This dance team would add to our art performance programs to offer to all students. Adding another spirit team will boost students' self-esteem and make their, make them feel like they're supported by their school. We have an abundance of sports programs to offer to those who are skilled in playing ballgames, but we are lacking in the art performance that we offer to students. We have cheerleaders that use their skills and talents to support their school and show their school's spirit. We could add to our arts by adding a dance team. There are students at Gate City who are experienced and skilled, but they have limited opportunities to support their school. Offering, opening up a dance team will give possible 15 to 20 students an opportunity to be involved in their school. Our county needs something new and fresh. This will encourage students to not be so shy and step out of their comfort zone to give them confidence. It will also encourage students to have better attendance and grades. The ways this would benefit Gate City? This dance team will benefit Gate City High School by offering more opportunities in the art performance in our county. A dance team will boost more spirit at games and events. This will benefit football games and basketball games in attendance. If you have 20 new dancers in attendance to the games, you multiply that by two parents, two grandparents, aunts and uncles, and families. This is, this increases the revenue at gate with ticket prices. Also, those families will buy concessions during the game, and our school will benefit from a new dance team to, by adding to our fan base and encouraging people to attend ballgames. Opportunities for students? A new dance team will provide more opportunities. Seventy students tried out for the cheer team this year. The previous cheerleaders automatically made the team. Only two seniors graduated. This left only two new spots for cheerleaders. The varsity team moved up two JV cheerleaders. This left zero spots for anyone to make the team. Out of the 70 students, 41 of them didn't make the team and didn't have an opportunity because there were no spots available for them. If we open the door for a new dance team, this will allow 20 of those students, 20 of those 41 students, a chance to give their skills of dancing for their school. This will also show our students that our school cares about our ideas and supports our dreams. So, what I'm proposing is that the dance team be involved in all school spirited events. We want to dance at home football games, on the track, and also during halftime. The opposing team has their cheerleaders on the track in front of their fan sections. We think we should be allowed to dance on the track in front of our fan section. We wouldn't be in the way of football players or cheerleaders on the field. The cheerleaders are usually in front of the band. If the cheerleaders wanted to cheer in front of the fan section, we could switch with them and cheer in front of the band section. We can also alternate places to dance. We would like to dance at away football games as well, if this is a possibility. We feel like we will be a spirit team that can add to the crowd's experience. Home basketball games and, home basketball games only, and only during halftime. We understand the gym is small, and there wouldn't be much room for cheerleaders and dancers. We're willing to only dance during halftime. We want to be involved in all pep rallies, homecoming events, and other school activities. Mr. Vermillion mentioned that we could possibly dance at some baseball games, too. We plan to participate in parades and Gate City events. When I spoke to Mr. Vermillion, he had two issues. I have solutions to both of those that he was, that he were concerned about. One was funding, and two was practice space. Funding, would it be an issue? We have fundraisers already in place if this is approved. If you look in your bonders, there are, there's a section for funding, and... Let me pull it up. We have a calendar cash fundraiser that would raise in total $9,920, which would raise $496 for each dancer. We also have business sponsorships that will raise the least $500 and most $3,000. We have Krispy Kreme certificates that could raise $2,000, fall and spring dancer sodas that would also raise $2,000. Um, what these fundraisers would pay for would be uniforms, dance bags, and pom-poms. There are other fundraisers throughout the year that will add additional funds if needed, like a Chick-fil-A fundraiser, a car wash fundraiser, spaghetti dinner, and a bingo knot with prizes. There's also pictures of each fundraiser, if you look in your bonders. Practices, wouldn't be an issue. We have some places already in place for practice if there's room, if there's no room for us in the school. There's the First Baptist of Gate City Gym, First Baptist of Weber City Gym, hallway in front of the high school gym, stage in the high school gym, outside, and Lame Flat Theater. I really hope that you all approve this dance team. Today, I've brought with me three choreographers, Aaliyah, Gracie, and Eliza. They're gonna tell you about their experience.
Hi, I'm Aaliyah Kegley. Um, I am an advanced dancer in all genres. Um, I have danced all my life. Um, and I am, I have been at three studios, and I'm currently at Tollaway Dance Studio right now.
Hello, my name is Eliza Faith Sanders. I started taking dance classes when I was three years old. I am trained in a variety of styles, including ballet, tap, jazz, contemporary. I've done some hip-hop, clogging, ballroom. I have experience in almost every single style of dance. When I was in middle school, I had the opportunity to try out for my teams, uh, for my school's cheerleading team, and I didn't actually want to because they didn't have a dance team, and I would have preferred using that time to dance instead of cheer. This made me be really introverted, and I wasn't able to really experience the things that my school had to offer at the basketball games or socially at different football games. When I was in high school, I decided to join my dance team there, and that allowed me to break out of my shell a lot. It completely changed my life because I was able to make new friends, and I was able to really step out of my comfort zone and support my school. During those years, I was on the dance team for four years. Um, I went to camp at, uh, Universal Dance Association for four of those years as well. Two of those years, I was able to make All-American. Um, and then I was able to be the dance team captain for two of those years as well. I would love to be a part of this new dance team, and I'm very happy to be volunteering my time as a choreographer. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Gracie Glevins, and I am a graduate of Robinson High School in 2019. I also started dancing since I was very young. Um, I have multiple different experiences at different studios, as well as all around, honestly, the United States, and different classes in Atlanta and in Maryland. Um, one of my favorite things about dancing was that at my schools in Kingsport City, we were able to have a dance, uh, a dance team. And so in Robinson High School, that's never, my career started out pretty much with dance team. I joined in seventh grade, in eighth grade, I became their captain, and that's whenever they gave me the opportunity to start choreographing. That was a really impactful time in my life because going from middle school to high school, you already are making friends with not only our opposing schools. So we had from Sevier, which is another middle school, that we would interact with and dance with. So that was a really good way for us to make friends and make the high school transition a lot easier. And I honestly only have the dance team to thank for that. In high school, I actually ended up joining the Robinson High Cherokee and was able to do their dance choreography alongside of, with my sister, who also helped us with the choreography. Uh, I've been a choreographer for about three years now, and at different places I've choreographed. I've assisted teaching at Holloway Dance School, and I am currently the choreographer for Lame Flat Theater in downtown Kingsport. I really enjoy volunteering my time to choreograph because not only is it a good way to stay fit, it also allows me to show my passion, not only for these girls through dancing, but to just really impact on their lives, not only with their dancing, but for educational purposes and just their personality and their everyday life. One thing that I'm truly grateful for with dance team is that whenever I graduated high school, I was able to get scholarship opportunities from my past dance experience. So my college was paid for me to dance, and I wouldn't have had the opportunity if this wasn't given to me. So I am more than happy to volunteer my time as a choreographer for Gate City High School if the dance team is approved.
My name is Amber Kegley, and I would be coaching the dance team if it, as a volunteer. Um, I'm not asking for any funds to do that. I will volunteer my time. And, um, I do have some experience in dance in my younger years, but I do have experience with youth. Um, I have my bachelor's degree in education and from Milligan College, and I was also director of children and youth ministries at my church. So I've been working with youth for over 20 years. And I would like to volunteer my time to help this dance team. And like we said, this, we are not asking for any funding from the county or the school. Um, so it's not gonna hurt the school as it comes to money-wise. And also practices, I already spoke with First Baptist of Gate City. Um, I already scheduled for June 21st and June 22nd. He actually gave a test for free. He said he likes to support Gate City school sports, and I was just taken aback. He was so nice about it. But if we were to have a tryout, that's kind of our projected trial date is June 21st and June 22nd, and we've already got it booked for free in case, um, it did get approved. But we did, we just wanted to propose this to you all, and we hope that you, uh, will definitely take everything in mind. And you can look over the bonders, and thank you for your time.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, since it's a new, since it's new to the school, uh, on your tryouts, how would you judge them, since none of the kids have been?
So we got in the first section of the tryout packet, we kinda took a look at the cheerleading packet that they used, because we knew the same rules and regulations would be for cheerleaders as they are for dance, because in the spirit team rulebook, cheerleading and dance falls under the same rules and regulations. So we went by that, and we got in the tryout packet. Um, there are, I think the very back pack, the back page, is a team score sheet. The cheerleaders do that as well. Um, so what we would do at tryouts, you have two days of tryouts. They would do like some team skill building, getting to know each other, and then we are gonna post videos. There is an app called Team Reach, and on Team Reach, for anyone that's interested in joining the dance team, they'll join that app. We will post four videos. On those videos, they will practice them. They'll have about a week and a half to two weeks to practice those videos, so they'll be ready at tryouts. When they come into tryouts, they should know their routines already. And so then we have the three choreographers that will be helping, and me too also, um, that will take a look at all the ones, the candidates that try out, and will be going by the score sheet in the back of the packet. Um, we, I researched a lot of different dance teams across Virginia and across Tennessee, and, uh, took a look at how they did their tryouts and how they did their score sheets as far as knowledge of the routines, the timing, the technique, um, their enthusiasm, attitude, um, kinda, and then looked at the cheerleader, how they did it at, at Gate City, because I wanted to base the same rules and regulations on there, too. Um, and they're also, will follow the same code as the cheerleaders do with like the demerit system. I just kinda followed along with that. You know, if there are failing classes, they can no longer be on the dance team. Kinda follows the same thing as the sports. Um, they have to be passing three classes to be able to dance. Um, so it kinda just follows along with the same spirit team that Gate City already has.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
No, we'll discuss it with the board and try to get you... Go ahead.
I'm interested, several things that you ought to do is pertaining to what cheerleaders do. So how are they gonna feel about you aren't taking away from them?
So as the dance team, we don't wanna take away from the cheerleaders. They're still gonna do exactly what they're already doing. But if you look at other schools, like, we've researched a lot in Tennessee, they have a lot more dance teams than in our local area. Here in Scott County and Lee County don't have a lot of dance teams to go off of. So I looked at Pulaski, they have some. So cheer and dance are same spirit teams. Doesn't take from each other. Um, it shouldn't, they should work together, more as a team work together. So I would contact the cheer coach, and I would talk with her, and just introduce myself and say, "I don't wanna take from your team. Your team can still do what they do. We just wanna add to it. We wanna add to school spirit at the games." You know, the cheerleaders are kind of down where the band area is, but there's nothing at the fan section. So they try to run here at the band, and they'll run here to the fan section and do, but with this, you'll have a dance team and a cheer team, both boosting the spirit in the crowd for the whole sections, and they can switch. So it wouldn't take from the cheerleaders.
Anybody else? Not? So, like I said, we'll discuss it tonight, try to get you answered as quick as we can, okay?
Okay. And you can keep these bonders?
All right.
You wanna look through them and all the details that Sierra's worked out? Thank you.
And you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Pretty good, man, ready. I said, thank you all again, and, uh, our next item is approval of budget closeout meeting on June 28th. Uh, we're, might be finally getting our budget money together, and let's, and work on closeout for this year. Well, that's what that's for.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's gonna close out for the year '21, '22. So I need approval for, uh, for that meeting.
Make the motion.
Got a motion from Mr. McConnell?
Second.
A second from Ms. Gillenwater, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, any of that? What, what day is that?
I think that's the last Thursday, isn't it?
I think it's on Tuesday.
Tuesday, I'm sorry. Last Tuesday, last Tuesday. You don't really have a regular time.
It, it doesn't matter.
It's a true else convenience there, whether it's 4:00 or 6:30, or somewhere there between.
Wherever you all want.
What was the date?
It's 28th.
6:30.
So is that what, uh, three, three weeks from now?
Three weeks from now.
You want 6:30?
That's fine.
Here, or at school board office? School board office?
That's fine.
Yeah. School, school board office, 6:30. June 28th. Huh? I'll let you have gab, gab there, man. So did we approve that, I can't remember, we was getting, uh, we made a motion, we made a second? Can't remember. Who made the motion? I'll do it again. Mr. McConnell?
Mr. McConnell.
And a second from Ms. Gillenwater, with a date, and a time, and a place. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we got all that situated. So it looks like we'll hand it over to superintendent report, and he's got a, he's got a lot of items going. Good luck, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, in your package, you will find notification of the Virginia Department of Education School Nutrition Grant Award. Uh, we were recipients of, of an award in regards to school nutrition in the amount of $31,839, and this is, this will be solely for Duffield Primary. Now, one thing I wanna share with you, we made application for all schools. If you'll notice on the ensuing pages, uh, they only had a limited amount of money in which they, uh, did award amounts to in excess of $636,672. Those were statewide. So we were fortunate enough to at least get, uh, we'll be able to get some replacement equipment for the cafeteria at their Duffield Primary. And it's just one... I just, just wanted to share that with you. Also, the next item we have, I've received a letter. In years past, we had recognized our foster grandparent program, when we had, had it whenever it first began, and for a number of years since then. But unfortunately, in this letter, it does say that this will, this would have been, or this is the last year of its operation. So, I just wanna share that with you. And also, there was a nice letter of appreciation from Brandy Barnett, who was over the program itself. And again, I just wanted to share that with you. And thank those foster grandparents who came to our schools and worked with their youth. I can't thank them enough for taking the time out of their schedules to do that. The next item we have is the insurance that we do have for the school division, and the breakdown of the cost in comparison for this year, this upcoming school year, in comparison to that of the school year that we just completed. And if you'll notice, too, it is less than what we, what the new bill will be, is less than what we paid this previous year. And one of the, one of the driving factors is that, is a number of workman comp claims. And so, we've been very fortunate, and I might go some wood here, we'll keep that going, that our workman's comp claims continue to decrease. That is a driving factor in the cost of the premiums of sales. So, we did add some additional insurance coverage, as noted there, for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Again, I just wanted to share that with you. Does anyone have any questions in regards to the premium itself, total premium? The next item we have, and I'll ask your approval, a locally awarded verified credit for student number three, one, one, seven, four.
I'm gonna get motion. A motion from Mr. Sally?
Second.
Second from Mr. Hood, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
The next item we have, and this is being a class that will be offered at each of our schools. It is an honors class in Virginia United States history. We do have several honors classes that we are currently offering, and we wanted to expand this into the history program as well. Unless there's any particular questions in the course description, as well as the course grading and the context of this, I'll ask your approval as presented.
Got a motion from Ms. Gillenwater? A second from Mr. Hood, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item we have, we have several items listed for our surplus sale. And to say that this will be the, the extent of this list, it'll keep, continue to grow, but I wanna give you an idea of the items that we will be putting into the sale, with the condition that it will expand. They'll come across something that they will no longer loan at each of our schools. And one of the biggest sellers that we have listed is our, our school buses that are no longer in use. We have several of those that are, that will be sold, along with some additional items, vehicle items as well. And the sale itself always takes place on Saturday following July fourth, which will be July the ninth. So, with that, I will ask, unless there's any particular questions, to approve the list of surplus items and the date for the sale. We can do that if, if Paulie won, can't we?
I'll make that a motion.
A motion from Mr. Houseright? Second from Mr. Sally, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is the health insurance consultant. The term will run from January first, two thousand twenty-three, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. And this is a recommendation of the chairman of our insurance committee. We did have, our initial interview committee did listen to, to potential candidates, and the committee that listened to these made a full recommendation to the entire insurance committee, and with that, they are recommending Baze Benefit Advisors to be our health insurance consultant for the timeframe I just made mention. Unless there's any particular questions, I ask your approval for Mr. Baze and his, and his team to serve as our insurance consultant.
I'll make a motion. Motion from Mr. McConnell? Second from Mr. Sally, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Next item we have is a Head Start employee list. These are contracted, these individuals are under contract, and this will be effective for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion from Mr. Houseright?
Second.
Second from Mr. Hood, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have, as you recall, may have mentioned in previous meetings, there were two timeframes in which the original Head Start program ran their payroll, as well as a different timeframe in which the early Head Start ran their payroll. And what this document here is, they want to change in the scope of the funding where they will combine the two together to consolidate so that they do not have two separate payrolls. Unless there's any particular questions, I ask your approval for this grant consolidation of the Head Start and early Head Start program.
I'll make that a motion. Motion from Mr. Hood? Second from Mr. McConnell, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is approval of transportation waiver for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Again, it's as for Head Start. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this, I ask your approval as presented.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion from Mr. Houseright? Second from Ms. Gillenwater, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is approval of the Head Start financial report for April two thousand twenty-two. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this report, I ask your approval as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Mr. McConnell? Second from Mr. Sally, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
The next item we have is for informational purposes. This is the records report for the May of two thousand twenty-two. And again, this is for informational purposes. Does anyone have any questions in regards to this report?
I'm not sure.
Next item we have is the science textbook with supporting technology. This is adoption for grades six through nine, which would include environmental science as a ninth grade, sixth grade science, seventh, physical science, eighth. Unless there's any particular questions, I ask your approval of this product for our science adoption for those grades made mention.
I'll make that a motion. Is this a new book?
They actually, they used it on a trial basis this past year as continuation, and they liked it, and it does have a technology component to it as well, which they can access the same material with the use of the Chromebook. So, they won't necessarily have, physically have to have the textbook with them at all times.
I mean, I'm just a little, you know, this day and time. I don't know what people are putting in books, but I don't know if I really wanna approve something that I don't really know what's in there, you know? Have you guys looked through it?
Our science teacher's saying.
Your science teacher's saying?
Yep. It goes for the committee, they need to look at.
Okay. We feel good?
There's not been any issues from it.
I'll make the motion for approval. A motion from me, and a second from Mr. McConnell, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item we have, and we have asked this for a number of years, this is a line of credit for the school operating fund for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And in previous years, we have asked for a four million dollar line of credit until the monies start rolling into the counties before we can receive those monies. Again, I will ask the board supervisors to approve, if this is approved with our board, and this particular line of credit to be secured by the treasurer's office.
Player bills, we don't have, so we get some money coming back. I'll make a motion for approval. A motion from me, a second from Mr. Sally, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is a resolution, and this is for the Virginia Public School Authority. And these monies here are used to upgrade and update our internal components within our technology, our networking. We have used these monies, of course, to purchase additional Chromebooks as well, but this money we receive year in and year out, from one year to the next, and I just wanted to use far. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this resolution, I ask your approval of it as presented.
Make the motion. Second. Motion from Mr. McConnell, second from Mr. Houseright, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's all that I have.
Thank you. My understanding, we need to go into closed meeting?
Yes, I'm moving in and closed meeting to discuss candidates for employment and the assignment and performance of Head Start personnel, teachers, teaching assistants, coaches, secretaries, custodians, and cafeteria staff, as provided in section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia as a meeting.
Second. Got a motion, a second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. One turn.